Good morning and welcome to a New York City Council Public Hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Okay, good morning and welcome to a New York City Council Public Hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, please see myself or one of the Sergeant-at-Arms in the room. Lastly, no one may approach the dais. I repeat, no one may approach the dais. And Chair Riley, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined by Councilmember Moya, Abreu, Bacha, Maramato, Shoman, and Today, we are scheduled to hold three votes and then five hearings, so we have another full agenda today. The first vote concerns LU's 44 and 45, which consists of the 396-400 Avenue X rezoning proposal. The second vote concerns LU's 37 and 38, which consists of the 30-11 12th Street rezoning proposal. The third vote concerns LU's 39 and 40, which consists of the 23-01 Steinway Street rezoning proposal. Switching to the hearings, we will hear first, hear a proposal. Well, we will hear first, the 341 10th Street Development Proposal in Park Slope, Brooklyn, which we heard about on March 12th. This is the second hearing on the project to receive any comments specifically about the proposed special permit. We would then hear a proposal that will allow sites in the city to compete in the state's selection process to operate a casino. The third hearing concerns a mixed-use manufacturing and office development in Red Hook, Brooklyn. The fourth hearing concerns a mixed-use residential development in Midwood, Brooklyn. The fifth and final hearing concerns mapping the commercial overlay to legalized businesses along a stretch of Broadway in Elmhurst, Queens. I now turn it over to Subcommittee Counsel to review hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair. I'm William Vidal, counsel to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in the chambers, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. If you haven't already submitted a speaker card, please make sure you indicate which project you would like to testify regarding and whether you're testifying in opposition or in favor of a project. Members of the public may also view a livestream broadcast of this meeting at the council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like to, the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, please email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair as Councilmembers may have questions. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda item.
Thank you, Counsel. Starting with today's votes, the first vote is to approve LU's 44 and 45, which concerns a proposal known as 396-400 Avenue X. This mixed-use residential development proposal, which is located in Councilmember Brandon's district in Gravesend, Brooklyn, consistently, consists of approximately 45 apartments and ground-floor commercial space. The first proposed action involves rezoning an R4 residential district in the Special Ocean Parkway District to an R7A residential district with a C2-4 commercial overlay. The second proposed action is to map a mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which will require the applicant to include affordable housing in the proposed development. The modification is to remove MIH Option 2 and require that the proposed development comply with MIH Option 1. MIH Option 1 requires that 25% of the units be provided to households making an average of 60% AMI or less, which is approximately 60,000 for one person. Councilmember Brandon supports this proposal as modified. The second vote is to approve with modifications LU's 37 and 38 concerning a proposal known as 30-11 12th Street. This mixed-use residential development proposal, which is located in Councilmember Caban's district in Astoria, Queens, will have approximately 86 apartments. The first proposed action involves rezoning a residential area comprised of multi, multiple zoning districts to an R6A residential district with a C2-3 commercial overlay. The second proposed action is to map a mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which will require the applicant to include affordable housing in the proposed development. The modification is to remove MIH Option 2 and add the deeply affordability option. The deep affordability option requires that 20% of the units be provided to households making an average of 40% AMI or less, which is approximately 40,000 for one person. Councilmember Caban supports this proposal as modified. I believe we have Councilmember Caban online. Councilmember Caban, would you like to give any remarks?
Thank you, Chair Riley. I will be super brief. Obviously, asked multiple questions at the last hearing and the developer was responsive, so, you know, we're happy to see this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. The third and final vote is to approve with modifications LU's 39 and 40 concerning a proposal known as 23-01 Steinway Street. This mixed-use residential development proposed, which is also located in Astoria, Queens, in Councilmember Caban's district, will approximately 22 apartments. The first proposed action involves rezoning a residential area from an RF, excuse me, R5D rezoning district to an R6A residential district and mapping a uniform C2-4 commercial overlay. The second proposed action is to map mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which will require applicants to include affordable housing in the proposed development. The modification is to remove MIH Option 2 and add the deep affordability option. Councilmember Caban also supports this proposal as modified. Councilmember Caban, you want to give remarks about this one?
Again, similar to the first, just appreciate that the developer has been responsive to our priorities in the district and we're happy to see the project move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Members of the Subcommittee who have any questions or remarks about today's item should let me know or use the raise hand button if you're online. Councilmembers will announce members in order that hands are raised. I see that we've been joined by Councilmember Salam as well. Counsel, are there any Councilmembers with questions or remarks at this time?
No, Chair.
I now call for a vote to approve with modifications LU's 44 and 45 relating to the 396-400 Avenue X rezoning proposal, LU's 37 and 38 relating to the 30-11 12th Street rezoning proposal, and LU's 39 and 40 relating to the 23-01 Steinway Street rezoning proposal. Counsel, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair. Chair Riley?
Aye on all.
Councilmember Moya?
Aye.
Councilmember Abreu?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Salam?
Aye on all.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye on all.
Chair, these items are approved and referred to the Land Use Committee by a vote of six, no abstentions and zero negative votes.
Thank you. Can I have David Rosenberg see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to let them know what project they wanted to speak about? Thank you. And Jacqueline Laurie? Thank you. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on LU's relating to 817 Avenue H rezoning proposal in Councilmember Lewis' district in Midwood, Brooklyn. The proposal is to develop a mixed-use residential development that will be subject to mandatory inclusionary housing. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to And I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Lewis to give remarks regarding this project.
Thank you, Chair Riley, for the opportunity to speak on this application. I'm Councilmember Farrah Lewis. I represent the 45th Council District. The 817 Avenue H rezoning application seeks to rezon the northern portion of Avenue H between East 8th and East 9th Streets in Midwood. The proposed zoning change is from an existing R5 with a C1-3 commercial overlay to an R7A with a C-4 commercial overlay. The project site is located within the Special Ocean Parkway District. The development is proposed as a nine-story mixed-use building with 42 dwelling units. That's 11 affordable under MIH. Community facility spaces, retail space, and 20 attendant parking spaces. I had concerns with this application primarily with the portions of the proposed rezoning area that would include two-to-three-story residential homes along East 8th and East 9th Streets. Community Board 14 has asked that the existing laundromat, senior center, all be included and continue to exist within the proposed development. I hope the applicant will continue to allow these entities to remain at the site as per the request of the community. Thank you again, Chair Riley, and to all my colleagues on the Subcommittee, and I look forward to hearing from the applicant on this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Counsel, can we please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, the first panel consists of David Rosenberg.
Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony and in response to questions by Councilmembers?
I still affirm.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant may begin. Before you begin, just please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Riley. David Rosenberg of Rosenberg-Nestus PC, on behalf of the applicant, Agudas Council of Greater New York. Next slide, please. The applicant on this project, Agudas Council of Greater New York, is an affiliate of Agudas Israel of America Incorporated, one of the largest umbrella organizations of Orthodox synagogues in the United States. As part of this project, the applicant is seeking to better utilize the existing site on Avenue H in Brooklyn to make sure that we can provide expanded and updated facilities for the existing synagogue on the site, as well as the existing senior center, to make sure that we can create new community service space, and importantly, to ensure the long-term financial stability of both the synagogue and the senior center on the site, while also meeting what we know is a very strong community need for new housing, new affordable housing, and particularly as it relates to new development, new larger family-sized units. Next slide, please. As you can see, the development site is located on the north side of Avenue H in Midwood, located approximately a half mile from the Q Station at Avenue H and approximately a half mile from the F Station at Avenue I. Next slide, please. You can see the development site highlighted, as well as the larger rezoning area. And in this image, you can see some of the additional context for this. The area surrounding this largely is zoned existing R7A and is improved with largely six- and seven-story pre-war development buildings. Next slide. You can see some additional context here with the development site on the right side of the existing one-story building and some of the buildings across the street. Next slide, please. And here, you can see just from the other side, some of the other existing context that exists for this. Skip ahead two slides. And here, you can see from the side streets, some of the existing context of some of the lower rush from the existing R5 zoning. Next slide. This slide just shows a larger view of the area with the proposed zoning changes highlighted, as well as you can see that most of the existing area is an existing R7A district and with a significant amount of six- and seven-story pre-war multifamily development. Next slide. This slide highlights a little bit more clearly the proposed change to the commercial overlay. The existing site is zoned with a C1-3 commercial overlay that extends 150 feet from the middle, from the center line of the street and encompasses a number of the single-family homes on East 8th and East 9th Street. We are proposing to remove that C1-3 overlay and replace it with a C2-4 overlay that covers just the 100 feet with frontage on Avenue H. Skip ahead three slides, please. And so, here you can see what the proposed development looks like as we've seen. During the public review process, as Councilmember Lewis alluded to, we received a lot of feedback from the community about the importance of maintaining the laundromat. And so, we've reworked the ground floor to make sure that we can find a way to keep them there. We plan on working with the existing tenant and with community groups to make sure that we can bring them back in when the building is complete. You can also see here that on the first floor, we're proposing to retain the existing synagogue in a newer facility and slightly larger facility, as well as a second floor of community facility that we plan on using as a shared space between the synagogue and the senior center and above residential units with setbacks as the building goes up to a total of nine stories. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see an illustrative rendering of the proposed plans. We've taken care to incorporate setbacks on all sides to reduce the visual impact of the building, both on the streetscape and also on the neighbors along the side streets. And with that, I'm happy to take questions from the committee.
Thank you, Daniel. Why did you select an R7A district specifically?
So, looking at the area here for context, there is existing R7A both to the east and to the south of this area here, and most of it is built with existing six- and seven-story buildings with a similar bulk to what an R7A district would allow. You know, we thought, we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with the area's character and not, we weren't looking to go significantly larger with, say, an R7D, and we felt that an R7A appropriately balances the ability to generate new housing, including permanently affordable housing through MIH, with keeping community context.
Have you had any discussions with the property owners who have adjacent sites?
Yes, we've had significant discussions with them. The owner immediately adjacent to the development site is generally in opposition to this project because she doesn't want to see development there. The owner of the other site with frontage on Avenue H has generally been favored towards the rezoning, but not, but understands community concerns and hasn't been actively promoting it.
I see that you're going to allocate the space for the synagogue and the senior center. Are they currently operating right now?
Yes, they currently occupy the existing facility and they share the space.
So, when you're doing construction, is there another place that they will be operating that you're helping them out with? And if so, where?
Yeah, so, we've publicly said that we are going to make sure that they have suitable interim space. It's not just a commitment for us that comes from developers. You know, the applicant here is the largest umbrella organization for Orthodox synagogues. We set up synagogues, not just in New York, but around the country. We're not in the business of closing them down, and, you know, it's a religious commitment for us as well to make sure that they have a permanent place to be even during construction. The senior center as well, the existing senior center is one of our affiliate organizations, and it's part of the corporate charter for the applicant to make sure that we provide those senior services. We have not identified a space yet because we believe we're a little too far out from being able to start construction to be able to talk about exactly where we're going to put them. We've been looking at facilities in the area that are potentially available, and as, you know, we think we're closer to starting construction, we will make the arrangements to make sure we're there. But we've been clear that construction will not start if we don't have a location for them.
Thank you. My last question, if I turn over to Councilmember Lewis. If this rezoning is not approved, what would the applicant do with this site?
The most likely scenario is that the existing conditions remain. The existing synagogue and senior center will be there in the existing building, which certainly has seen better days, and it's not entirely clear where the capital funds would come to make the improvements necessary over the long run.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Chair. Can you talk about the community's response to the proposed changes? Have you met with Community Board 14 regarding the updates?
Yeah, so, we've had extensive public engagement in this process. Community Board 14 met, had their public hearing in early December with a very spirited full-board hearing after that. After some very long discussions, we're very happy to receive unanimous approval from Community Board 14, as well as from the Brooklyn Borough President. Beyond that, we've had extensive engagement with the neighbors who live in the immediate area, especially those who are members of the synagogue, including multiple hours of meetings with them about the proposed development. And they have continued to express some concerns about particularly the non-applicant sites that are included in this project, but have largely come around to support this development.
And let's talk about affordability, because we know that's a key concern for many of the community members. Can you discuss the breakdown of affordability with the 11 units under the proposed MIH Option 1? What types of bedrooms will be affordable?
Yeah, so, we would be looking at, right under the current proposal, 11 total affordable units, four of them in the very low-income range in roughly 31 to 50% AMI, and seven units at the low income of 51 to 80% AMI to balance out at 60% AMI as required by MIH Option 1. The total number of units would ultimately be subject to the final mix in how many units we are trying to prioritize through our discussions with the community, larger family-sized units, which would ultimately reduce the total number, but we feel is still important to have those larger units. And the total breakdown would ultimately be consistent with what the building is. So, MIH regulations require that the mix of affordable units match the mix of total units.
And have you participated in any discussions with HPD to find ways to provide more affordability?
Yeah, we've had some preliminary conversations. Because the developer is a religious corporation, there's a limit to the HPD programs that we can take advantage of directly, but once we get closer to development, a developer partner may be able to take some advantage. And we've stated that we would give a strong look at any developer partners who are able to use those programs to increase affordability levels.
And would reducing the rezoning area to remove properties not in support of the rezoning pose as a risk for this development?
It would require certain changes to the building envelope, particularly there are step-down rules from our R7A districts next to R5 that would change a bit of the setbacks that we show in these, in the current renderings, but all in all, we think we will still be able to develop the full number of units and floor area.
Thank you. And how will the applicant work with the community board and civic associations to address the traffic safety concerns with this new development?
Yeah, we've had many discussions, as Councilmember you're aware. We continue to do it, and we've been using whatever influence we have with DOT to be able to get that study. The environmental review for this project didn't trigger the level of intersection analysis that, but as we've said, we strongly support. Traffic calming measures, we think it's good for the neighborhood. We also think it's good for our development.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any more Councilmembers with questions for this applicant panel? There being no questions for this applicant panel, this panel is now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 817 Avenue H rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
No, Chair, or is anybody signed up either online or in person to testify regarding this proposal? And we may proceed to closing the hearing.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU's relating to 817 Avenue H rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I just want everyone to take a look above. We've been joined by Beacon High School from Hell's Kitchen. Just clap it up for them for joining us today in City Hall. Also, we've been joined by Councilmember Keith Powers. Also, I would like to, oh, I saw Bacha. Also, I would like to close the vote from the votes that we had earlier officially. Thank you. Councilmember Bacha, did you want to say something to your group of students here?
I'd like to welcome Beacon High School to City Hall. Thank you so much for coming. We love Beacon and supporting you and everything you do, and we're so proud of you for all your accomplishments. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on pre-considered LU relating to the gaming facilities text amendment. This is a proposal by the administration to allow casino applicants with sites located in the city to compete in the state-run application process. In 2022, the state authorized the insuance of up to three licenses to operate a gaming facility downstate, including New York City. As a part of this authorization, the state specified a detailed application and review process that includes a mandatory local review. Presently, casinos are not allowed in the city. The proposed text amendment will allow applicants to propose sites in the city for one of the three authorized gaming licenses and participate in the state's election process. Under this proposed text amendment, only an applicant awarded a gaming license by the state would be, would be able to actually build a casino. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Counsel, can we please call the first panel for this item?
The first counsel consists of Susan Amron and Stephen Johnson.
Counsel, can we please administer the affirmation?
Yes. Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Stephen Johnson.
Susan Amron.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, you may please email us at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And the applicant team may begin. Panelists, before you begin, just please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, and good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Stephen Johnson, I'm with the New York City Department of City Planning.
My name is Susan Amron. I'm also with the New York City Department of City Planning.
So, thank you again for letting us present this project to you. Could we go to the next slide, please? So, the New York City Department, slide two, please, sorry. Thank you. So, the New York City Department of City Planning is proposing a citywide zoning text amendment to the zoning resolution to allow gaming facilities as a permitted use in commercial districts C4 through C8 and M1, M2, and an M3 manufacturing districts. Gaming facilities are not currently a legally permitted use in the city. It's not in the zoning resolution anywhere. So, the text amendment would add the use into the zoning resolution for the first time. So what is a gaming facility? A gaming facility is defined by the state, and it's a state-defined term, which means the premises approved under a state gaming license, which includes a gaming area and any other non-gaming structure related to the gaming use. And that may include things like hotels, parking structures, restaurants, any other affiliated uses related to the gaming facility. So it's a broader term, and would encompass more than just a casino. Now, it doesn't have to be all those other things. It could just be a casino, but it could be a broader thing with those other related uses. So this text amendment would facilitate the development and operation of up to three gaming facilities, and only three gaming facilities in the New York City area, as approved and licensed through a recent state-defined process, and the proposed text would deem the gaming facility allowed under the zoning resolution. And if approved, the text amendment would allow New York City to be considered as a possible location for a casino. The text amendment does not approve a casino. Next slide, please. So this entire process was kicked off by a statewide referendum in 2013 that was approved by New York State voters that authorized up to seven commercial casinos in the state. The first four licenses were awarded in the upstate New York region, and those have been built, and they're open, and they're in operation. Now, the text amendment is a result of a January 2023 announcement by the state to solicit proposals for the remaining three casino licenses, commercial casino licenses. And the New York State Gaming Commission created the New York State Gaming Facility Location Board as the entity that is overseeing the application and licensing process. Now, the Location Board made an announcement, like I mentioned a little over a year ago, and released a document called Request for Applications to Develop and Operate a Gaming Facility, which created a process to review these applications and award a license for these remaining three licenses in the downstate region, which includes obviously New York City, Long Island, Putnam, Westchester, and Rockland County. They also established a new siting and review process for those three licenses under what's called a community advisory committee, which I will get to in one of the later slides. So while gaming facilities, casinos, and racetracks are not currently legally permitted in the city, we do have one facility, Resorts World Aqueduct in South Ozone, Queens. It has automated table games and video lottery. There's no card tables with people dishing out cards to anyone. It's all automated. And of course, they have Aqueduct, a thoroughbred horse racing facility. This site is not subject to local zoning regulations, and that is why they're able to operate within New York City. So New York City also used to have off-track betting. There are still a number of locations in upstate New York. This is where you can make bets on horse racing. The New York City off-track betting subsequently folded in 2010. Next slide, please. So this is a map of the various facilities that the Gaming Commission oversees in the state. This includes video lottery, horse racing activity, and something they refer to as Indian gaming. And you can see our location in the lower portion of the slide in the New York City area. So if you look, it's a little bit hard to see, but I think some of you also have handouts. If you see the orange one and the purple one, that represents Aqueduct and Resorts World in Queens on the state-controlled property. The orange two is the Belmont Racetrack in Elmont, Long Island, and the red one is a video lottery and hotel site in Suffolk. The green five is the Yonkers Raceway in Empire City Casino, which is obviously another fully automated, but they have harness racing at that location. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the Gaming Facility Location Board outlined a process to review applications for these gaming facilities for the, up to three licenses, which would be awarded, and they created a new siting and review criteria. Now, the review process is in the form of a local community advisory committee, which must review and approve each proposed application in the specific location of the proposed facility. So each CAC has six voting members, including the governor, the mayor, the borough president, the local senator, the local assembly member, the local council member, and those are the six representatives on the CAC. So gaming facility proposals will submit detailed applications to be reviewed by the CAC, and that also includes the capital investments for each application. The CACs will hold public, at least two public hearings, and solicit public comments and feedback from stakeholders, community groups, as well as participation from city agencies. The CAC will then vote on the application, and it must be approved by a two-thirds vote in order for it to move forward. Any applications approved by the CAC with public support by the local, by the CAC will then be forwarded to the Gaming Facilities Location Board, who will then review all CAC-approved applications and to also ensure that they comply with all local zoning requirements. If the CACs do not approve the application, then it won't be forwarded to the Gaming Facility Location Board, and they won't be considered for the license. So among the factors that the Location Board must consider when reviewing applications is the economic development of each proposal and the number of quality jobs, the degree to which impacts on surrounding neighborhoods are mitigated, including transportation impacts, the workforce development plan, energy and resource efficiency agreements with organized labor, and diversity of ownership and employees. So one of the key elements of the citywide text amendment is that for any gaming facility application, to proceed in the state process, they have to be compliant with all local zoning requirements, and that's the purpose of our text amendment. So these applications that are reviewed and approved by the CAC and then awarded a gaming facility license, they shall be deemed complying with the zoning resolution. Next slide, please. So the proposed text is to facilitate the state's current casino proposal and enacted by the state legislature as described in the Request for Applications within the state's schedule and timeline. To do this, the department is proposing to add the gaming facility use into the zoning resolution for the first time into Use Group 8. This will enable the department to move as quickly and as efficiently within city resources without having to go through a ULARP process and environmental review for each of the nine applications. The gaming facility use is limited to C4 through C8 districts, M1, M2, and 3. It's not being proposed for any residential districts. And the amendment is only for a casino license as approved by the state related to the 2022 state budget, which is the three licenses. And the gaming facility, of course, may include other related uses. Next slide, please. So the text amendment is specific to these available licenses and not any future license that does not currently exist or could be approved five years from now, 10 years, 20 years from now. So the text is not applicable to any other gaming facility licenses. It's just these three. If the text amendment is approved, it doesn't mean that a gaming facility has been approved. It just permits the use, and then the CACs will then, during their public review process, will review applications, and they will have their vote. The text amendment does not cover any future modifications to a gaming facility. So if hypothetically, a gaming facility is approved, and they have a specific envelope, building height, parking structure, hotel, et cetera, that's the development. If it's awarded a license, and then they're in operation, and then 10 years down the road, they're like, this is extremely beneficial, we're doing a lot of great business, creating jobs, we want to expand. They can't expand just because they want to expand. They have to come to the city, go through the CPC, the City Planning Commission, and get any modifications. So if they wanted to add a new 500-space parking garage, a new tower, a new hotel, more keys, something along those lines, they would have to get approval by the City Planning Commission. Next slide, please. So during the public review process, the department heard questions and comments from the commission and from community boards about the likelihood of any hypothetical future gaming facilities and the parameters of the proposed text. So the department proposed a modification to the text to include what we colloquially refer to as a sunset provision for the submission of the gaming applications to the gaming facilities location board. So the purpose of the modification is to provide more assurances that the proposed text is only available to the current round of applications. It's not opening the door for, you know, gambling on every street corner or any other gaming facility. It's just these three licenses. The department believes it is highly unlikely, this hypothetical situation about where, you know, if the gaming facilities location board is not able to award more than two licenses, so if there's a license that's still in play, then they could potentially create a new process two or three years down the road and open it up. So what we did with the sunset provision is say the applications have to be in place by June 30th, 2025. And in a more bureaucratic modification, we added the December 5th referral date to the text. It was placeholder text for that. Next slide, please. So these are the nine proposals in New York City. Five are in Manhattan, all in Midtown, and the community districts 4, 5, and 6. There's one in the Bronx at Ferry Point Park and Golf Course. There are two proposals in Queens. One is called Future Queens at Willis Point, and the other is at Resorts World in South Ozone Park, and there's one on Coney Island. So one other detail I wanted to mention as I wrap up the presentation is that four of these applications need to go through ULARP this year, because what they are proposing to do is outside of the boundaries of the text amendment. The most obvious example of that would be Queens Future or Ferry Point Park. They're on state, it's a parkland, it's map parkland, so they have to create state legislation for alienation of the parkland, and then the city has to map a zoning district. So those will be going through ULARP for those mapping actions this year. So those will be coming to the community boards, going through ULARP for those mapping actions. So these actions are necessary in order to get to the place where the community advisory committees and the gaming facility location boards can review the applications. And the other three projects, I mentioned Queens, but the other three are Ferry Point Park, Coney Island, and Western Rail Yards. And that ends my presentation, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. I have a ton of questions for you. And I'm going to pass it over to my colleagues, who I'm pretty sure have questions as well. Taking a step back, and I know you repeated a lot of this in your presentation, but I'm going to ask you these questions for the record. Taking a step back, could you please help clarify why this text amendment is needed, given that the city already has gaming facilities at Aqueduct Racing Course in Queens?
So Aqueduct Resorts World is on state-controlled property, so they're not necessarily subject to zoning regulations. That's why that's able to operate there. So the reason why we're proposing this zoning text is because, first and foremost, that's the only way to meet the state's timeline for awarding licenses. If the state said, we're going to award these licenses five years from now, you know, we might have a different consideration for that. But there's no time, and to efficiently use the city's resources and our, our different agencies and departments, this is the best way that we can review it and get it out to the CAC process to meet that timeline.
So if this text amendment is not passed, are you saying that the city will not be able to compete for one of the three new gaming facility licenses the state has created?
Yes. If the text amendment doesn't pass, the city cannot get through nine massive ULARP applications within the timeframe.
Why did this administration propose to pursue this particular approach?
Just because it's the way that, so there's nine applications. Five of the applications are, meet, if the text amendment passes, five of the applications will meet the text amendment for the proposal for their gaming applications, and the four are just whittled down to mapping applications. So that's why we're proposing this, because it's the way that the city can work most efficiently and quickly to meet the state's timeline in the process.
It is my understanding that even if this text amendment is approved, some anticipated applicants may still need additional ULARP, like you stated, actions and approval from our city council members. If correct, can you explain why?
Sure. So three of the projects are demappings, and that's not something that we could do outside of the text amendment. And now, the example that I used foremost was Queens and the Bronx Ferry Point. It's on parkland, and that could require state legislation to move those forward to demap, alienate the parkland, and then the city will put in a zoning district in that area. So that's, and the demappings are not included within the zoning text amendment.
And which three locations are doing the demapping for the record?
So that's Coney Island, Bronx Ferry Point, Queens Future. And Western Rail Yards is a different situation. They have a different approved-for plan on that entire site. It's a large project, and they have a previous approval, and they're going with two, it's a little bit more complicated. They have two different scenarios for that development side.
So being that some applicants have to seek ULARP, why not have all the applicants seek the ULARP process?
Because we couldn't meet the state's timeframe. So the, the state just released some information yesterday on their timeline. There was a, I think it was a press conference or a, a meeting that they had, it hasn't been approved yet, but they said all applications, they expect awarding of the three licenses by the end of next year. And, and frankly, the city can't review nine massive ULARP applications in, within that timeframe.
What happens if the state decides to authorize additional gaming facility license in the future?
So the process for doing that in the, in the future is that there would be a statewide referendum. New York State voters would have to vote and approve it, including New York City voters, obviously. And then, if they approve it, then the, the city would then decide whether they wanted to be within that game of getting another casino or a casino back in the city. And then we would have to do a whole other text amendment, because this text amendment we're talking about today does not cover any future gaming facilities. So the city, you know, depending on what the proposal is, we would have to do another text amendment.
An article was just published that the state has been postponing the application process for the three authorized licenses. What happens if the state delays the process for another two years, where applicants looking to cite a casino in the city still be able to do that, even though circumstances may have changed?
No, because we added the sunset provision of June 30th, is that what it is, 2025? So if they don't, if applications are not submitted by that date...
Can you describe the sunset provision for those who may not know?
So that was the modification that we put into the text, because we heard a lot of feedback and, and concerns about future gaming facilities. So there's a hypothetical situation where everybody submits their gaming application, and then, for whatever reason, only two, one, two are awarded. That means there's still one of them floating around. And then the state could then do a whole new process for who gets that license. And that means it could open it up to areas of the city that we haven't discussed, haven't reviewed, and so that's why we put the sunset provision in. We believe the state wants to award these three licenses, because each of them comes with a minimum $500 million investment, and they're eager to award the licenses. So we don't think this is going to happen, but just to provide assurances in case it does, if gaming applications are not submitted by June 30th, 2025, then there's no gaming.
So Stephen, you spoke about you could, you could possibly do a gaming casino facility, but there's other possibilities. Could you just clarify what those other possibilities could be?
Sure. So you mean like the different uses, the affiliated uses? So most of these gaming facilities have hotels, they have a parking garage and restaurants, they might have a theater. Those are the type of things, I don't know if any of you have been to Las Vegas, to any of those types of facilities, but there's other affiliated uses with a casino, and it makes sense to have those affiliated uses with those. So we're saying if they're following the state's definition of, of related uses, if they want to do that, they can propose that in the gaming application that they submit. They don't have to do that. So like, for example, we know that a couple of the facilities that are being proposed are restricted by the footprint of their building, because they're in existing buildings. It's maybe Saks and 1515 Times Square, Broadway, 1550 Broadway. They're existing buildings. So they're not gonna be proposing, you know, a new tower because they can't put in a new tower, but they'll be proposing whatever they can fit into the existing building. So you could have just the casino, or like some of the other proposals, you can have the casino, hotel, garage, restaurants, maybe a theater, convention center, those types of uses.
Who will decide what the uses are, are allowed for the particular sites?
So each application will have detailed description of what they're proposing and what they want to build, and there's gonna be associated with an environmental review of those applications, and that's what the CAC is gonna be reviewing. And I could tell you also that as part of the review of those applications, city planning will be reviewing those applications. And from our perspective, we'll be looking, I think people will be reviewing these applications with an eye towards the existing zoning regulations and how that, whatever they're proposing does or doesn't fit in with the existing zoning. So the CACs review it, they comment on it, they get feedback at the public hearings. With the CACs, get feedback from stakeholders, community groups, and then they vote on it, the CACs vote on it, whether to approve it or not.
So even though this text amendment would allow an operator who is granted an actual license to build a gaming facility as a right without coming back to the city council, the local community and council member would still be involved in the review process?
For the gaming application?
Correct.
Whoever's on the CAC. So the local council member is a vote, reviewing and voting, and can make, obviously can make pages and pages of comments, get their opinion known. The local council member, the borough president, the mayor has a seat, and as part of the city agency that's involved with this process, we will also be reviewing applications and giving comments.
So is an applicant required to submit detailed plans of a proposed gaming facility they would like to build?
Absolutely.
Does the proposed text amendment place any restrictions on where and how large of a gaming facility can be built?
It doesn't necessarily place any restrictions on that, but as I mentioned earlier, the context is the existing zoning, and they're all very well aware of the existing zoning for their developments. So that's kind of the context of what they're building. So then, for example, if somebody's proposing, I'm being a bit outrageous here, if they're proposing a 10,000 space parking garage, then everybody would say, "Well, as a right, you would be allowed, whatever, 1,000 spaces." And then they would compare and say, "Well, why do you think you need those?"
Can you explain further the rationale for not imposing some restrictions on the size of gaming facility an applicant would be able to build?
So we don't, can't determine what their proposals are yet because a lot of them are not complete, and a lot of them haven't shown us any details of those. So that will be up to the CACs, the voting members, which will review the applications and make a determination on whether they think it's appropriate. I mean, it could be a case of if hypothetically, say there's a 300-foot height limit on a building, and they propose a 305-foot tall building, I don't know if the CAC will vote against it because of that reason, but if, you know, they proposed, if there's a 300-foot tight, height limit for a building and they propose a 1,000-foot height limit, you know, I would imagine the CAC would have a lot to say about that.
What's the next step if this text amendment is approved?
The next step, if it's approved as is, is that we will be working on the four applications that have ULP actions because we're, the goal is to have those certified by the end of the year in order to meet the state's timeline, those de-mapping actions.
Thank you. I would now like to call on Councilmember Shulman, followed by Councilmember Abreu, followed by Councilmember Carr.
Good afternoon. So what I want to ask, I'm Councilmember Shulman. I represent Western, Central Queens. So given that the applications will not be subjected to ULP under this, how do I know the impacts on the local community will be considered, such as traffic, by Willis Point, given the planned new stadium?
So one of the ways that transportation, for example, will be reviewed is through the environmental review process, and this was brought up to me many times during the public review because people are very concerned about congested streets and cars coming in. So each project has their environmental review and has to address any transportation issues associated with the proposal, and if they have any parking spaces, proposing any parking garage, et cetera, and whatever impacts are on that development site, and then, of course, mitigation from those impacts.
So there's, when we do a text amendment like this, it's giving up a lot of our ability to ask a lot of questions about a particular site moving forward. So I understand you talked about the environmental review process, but what assurances do we have that other things are gonna be considered? There's, there's traffic, there are other, there are other issues that could be brought up, so just want some assurances there because it's a blank check, basically.
Sure. So each applicant, if you look at the state's request for applications, they have, you know, 50 pages of what they have to put in their application.
Right.
And that includes environmental review, mitigation, jobs, economic development, who's controlling what, what they're proposing. So all those elements are in each application once they're submitted. So that's all up for review. So, for example, Resorts World in Queens has to complete that application, which you would be able to see and make comments on and consult with your, the community groups and the other people on the CAC in your discussions. And then you could say, you know, hypothetically, you could say, you know, "I don't think you're addressing transportation," or "I don't think you're addressing water impacts, sewage impacts," you know, those types of things. Those are, it's all fair game for you and whoever is attending the public hearings with the CACs to bring up, mention, and discuss.
But it's real, it, each of the, the, the applications within each of those specific areas are really tied to the council member that represents that area. So I, sitting here on zoning and franchise, am able to have a vote. I will not have a vote, I'll be able to comment, but I won't have a vote, so I just wanted to point that out, that that's a, that's a, that's a factor. The other question I want to ask is if the casino facility only occupies part, I'm talking about the city field, if the zone, if the casino facility only occupies part of the zone lot, can the applicant build on the rest of the zone lot?
No. They can only build according to their CAC-approved development. So they can't, the CAC will review whatever their application is for that specific gaming facility, and they'll review it and say, "Well, you know, you agree, we agree with this, we don't agree with that, let's discuss this, why are you doing this?" It's a whole public discussion on the elements of the project.
Right.
And they can't just start building something that's not approved. So that's, that's similar to if they're making any changes to, if they are approved, they would have to go through the city, DCP and CPC in order to get any changes to that. And furthermore, for that specific project, that's on parkland, so there's gonna be a zone, very highly delineated meets and bounds.
Right.
Where they can build things because they have to provide compensation, fair market value, all the things related to the parkland that they're building on. So that's gonna be delineated in their project, the bounds of their development, and they just can't start building anything on some other part of the park.
Okay. So I just want to say one thing for the record. So we, this is the first time we're having this blanket, can I finish my question, Chair? That we have sort of this blanket text amendment, and so it's a, you know, it sets the tone for the future down the road of doing other text amendments for other big projects in the city and everything else, and it eventually will whittle away some of the opportunities that we have as, as, as city council members to really have input on these projects. So I just, I, I'm not asking for an answer, but I'm just saying, in order for us to do this, I think you need to come back to us and say, "And because you're doing this, this is what we're gonna be able to put forth to you." So that's all, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Shulman, Councilmember Abreu, and Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Chair. Since allowing a casino at any of these locations represents great value to property owners and developers, wouldn't it make sense to require affordable housing for sites that could accommodate housing in addition to a casino?
So this is a commercial use, and we did not want any residential development related to it. We just wanted to focus on the commercial aspect of the use.
But if there is space available for production of affordable housing, good for the economy, good for, you know, working-class families who can, really struggling to afford a continued living here, why isn't that something that was considered, other than it's a commercial use? I mean, it seems like a very arbitrary distinction.
Sure. I totally agree with you that affordable housing is a huge issue in the city, and what the city is doing is, you're probably familiar with City of Yes, we have a proposal for housing opportunities that's coming out very soon in order to create more affordable housing. We've also done some things in our previous Economic Opportunities projects. We're doing a number of things focused on housing in particular, and this one is just focused on one gaming use.
And I, I don't think it's an either-or. I think we can build, you know, City of Yes, aside from that, you can also consider leveraging open lands, or open parks, or, take away the parks, areas that are conducive to building. You know, there are a lot of proposals that would lend itself to creating affordable housing, and I think it's something that ought to be considered if the project, in fact, would allow for that production. Obviously, in places like Manhattan, that might be more difficult, but in open areas, I think it's something that the city ought to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Abreu. Councilmember Carr, followed by Councilmember Powers.
Thank you, Chair. And you made it very clear in the presentation and the text that this is about allowing a gaming facility use in particular zoning districts, right? C4 to C8, M1 to M3. But it does nothing to affect the other requirements of those zoning districts, bulk, parking, et cetera, right? Any proposal that would come forward, at least for the five that don't have a subsequent mapping action, those proposals would have to conform to those requirements of the particular zoning districts. Am I correct in thinking that?
No, that, that would be up to the CACs to decide, and what I was stating earlier is that the as-of-right zoning would kind of be like the benchmark as to what you're looking at the proposed gaming facility against. So they wouldn't necessarily have to meet those particular zoning regulations.
So if the CAC and the state approve an application that otherwise would not meet the zoning requirements, there's no subsequent action required by CPC to approve that because it's not gonna conform with, say, for example, the C8 bulk requirements of the proposal?
That's right.
Okay. So I, I guess in terms of the other four, right, we know going into this discussion, and the state knows going into this discussion, that if they were to approve said site for a facility license, that there would be subsequent work that needs to be done on the city planning side. So I'm just wondering why we have the time to do that, why we're not considering a special permit process for this, right? Whenever we do large developments like a stadium, right, we have the special permitting. MSG is subjected to a term of years, it comes back, the community has an opportunity to renegotiate the benefits of said facility. So why wouldn't we envision something like that for this, where maybe the communities can feel a little bit more like they have their hand on the wheel, and local stakeholders, like our local electeds, feel like they have more of a hand on the wheel, not only now, but in the future?
Yeah, so the main reason is that we can't meet the state's timeline for awarding licenses. Going through ULP for a special permit, the creation of a special permit, whether through a large scale or whatever means, would require, would kick in many other things within the city, tie up city's resources reviewing these gaming applications when ultimately none of them may be approved. So I think...
But you're already gonna do that for potentially four of the nine, right? Because you have to do a subsequent mapping action. The legislature has to, you know, has to pass legislation, so I'm just confused about why the timing is not a factor there, but it is for the others.
It's mainly because the mapping action is smaller in scope than if you included all the envelope and bulk and uses of a proposal, which trigger a whole set of drawings and review within the timeframe that we typically review at city planning. You've probably heard, city planning sometimes takes a while to review things. We have to go through a process, a standardized process for reviewing things, and we can't meet the timeline. But the four projects that have to go through ULP, it's because they're smaller in scope and only have one action or two actions associated with it, which is the mapping.
But if, again, just to be clear, if this were to pass as, as modified, the way it's come from the commission, the CAC, the state, will be able to put these facilities in the relevant zoning districts without regard to the zoning requirements, per se? Am I, that's basically what you said earlier, right?
What I said was, people will review these applications with an eye towards what the existing zoning is.
With an eye towards, but they're not required to...
They're not required to it. And I'm, I'm confident that if somebody proposes a crazy tower somewhere that shouldn't, there shouldn't be a tower, that the CACs will be like, "Please cut that tower down" to a size that we approve of.
Thank you.
Or the discussion will be had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Power, followed by Councilwoman Ma'Amorada.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I just want to pick up on that last question, though, which is, it's not a question of whether the CAC will object to that idea of a large-scale tower. I think I'm confident that will happen, too. They will look at the proposal, have public hearings, need to get a two-thirds vote, so that proposal will have to end up in a place, if they were to have an appetite for approving it, to get to a place where community, you know, council member, borough president, so forth, are in support of that. I guess the question is, what is the mechanism to enforce that? Zoning, special permits, there's things that are mechanisms to enforce, I think, special permit potential against, you know, bad behavior, you know, modernization of community benefits or something like that, but an MSG may be a good, the right example, or something like that to pull from. But I guess the question is, once the CAC is involved in this part of it beyond the city council's approval of the large, that sort of the overall concept, what is the mechanism by which the CAC will be able to negotiate and then enforce if it were to be outside of what is the normal envelope and the normal expectations of zoning? Because that, I agree with you, I think the CAC is a, is an extra layer here to ensure that the community, we can meet the deadlines, but also the community can have really essential input. That's why it's there. But I guess that's my question, is what is the, what is the actual mechanism to ensure that what the CAC negotiates with or, or, you know, or discusses with an applicant actually becomes the project that's built?
So that's, whatever the CAC approves is the required development and envelope and bulk of the building. So then the Department of Buildings would review approved drawings and see what the requirements are because DOB enforces the zoning resolution. And so that would be the mechanism for enforcing what's being built, and then if there's any changes, that would then come back to city planning.
Okay. Is it your understanding, then, that the CAC is... Is it your understanding, then, that the CAC is established and in a position to negotiate height and bulk and zoning?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm sitting, I'm on, I will be, based on the nine that you mentioned, I'll be on two of those CACs, or an appointee of mine will be on two of those appointees. So I just want to go through that one more time. If I have an appointee, let's say, on the CAC, they will be talking to that applicant or hearing from the public, or any of the functions in form of that, and at the point where they say, there's that thousand-foot tower, I hate that thousand-foot tower, I want that three-hundred-foot tower you talked about earlier, what happens next? That is part of the approval process, or it's a kind of a new, okay?
That's part of the approval, so that's a two-thirds vote. So in the case of using the tower example, I could say what I would do is I would see, like, well, it permits a nine-hundred-foot tower, the zoning permits nine hundred feet. So if they're proposing a thousand feet, we would check the design, check the build, and actually, we'd say, actually, no, that, that might be okay, the way they put it together, or be like, no, you have to get down to nine hundred feet, or if the community is up in arms about something related to the height of the building, it's too close to this, too close to that, we want it down to eight hundred feet, and that's when you would discuss with the applicant team, and amongst the other members of the CAC, the details of the proposal, and what other people think about the tower on the CAC.
Okay. I think, I think the concern that I'm raising, although I think there's a, it's resolvable, but I think I'm just raising is the idea that you might get to the CAC and the zoning doesn't apply, and suddenly you believe you approved one proposal, and there's kind of freedom to build something else. And so it sounds like you want to add something to that, so I'll let you, go ahead.
No, I also just wanted to point out that what the CAC approves is what the state can review and license. And so the, the, what comes out of the CAC is, is the only thing that the state can consider. So if the CAC approves a building of, you know, five hundred feet or four hundred feet, the state can't say, well, we would like something, or we're okay with something larger. The CAC will put the limit on what the state can actually license.
Okay. I was under, when I'm looking at the state gaming's criteria, economic activity, local sites, you know, citing impact, I guess would be kind of a zoning thing. That's the, I know, and I understand what that's reviewing, but I thought that was kind of the mission of the CAC here, too, is to review those conditions, so just ensuring that zone, like, those types of things are also going to be included. I understand you're not the gaming facility board either, right? I just want to ask a couple more questions. Number one is, you talked about nine, you did nine proposals. We are certainly not too late to see another proposal here in the city, I suppose, is that correct?
Hypothetically, we could see another proposal. We've met with each of the applicants, because they want to all make sure that what the zoning text does is, they don't need any actions outside of it. So it would be a very poor business decision to come in at the end with a proposal that nobody's seen or looked at, and I think that would be unlikely. Also, these are.
Unlikely, yeah, but possible, but unlikely, there's no statutory.
Yes. Anybody, anybody could submit, you know, a proposal.
Okay. And the, and the, the three that need further, oh, there's four, I believe, I need four, there are further zoning actions, some that include parkland alienation or state legislation. Those are, can you sequence those out for me, the timelines of those different actions? Obviously, they're in session now in Albany, they will need to buy, I suppose, the end of June, have legislation that authorizes it. I guess they could go into next year theoretically, too, potentially. Do they need that before, they need to do the mapping action through city planning, if they're doing a new mapping action? And then how does that all relate to the process that we're going through right now?
They don't need that before the mapping action, but one of the things that the mapping action needs is to understand the boundaries of everything. So we're working with those applicant teams to understand where those lines will be and what they're proposing. It can be pretty complicated working with different city agencies and state agencies on where they want to put certain things on their development.
Okay. And the ones that are going through city planning for further action, mapping action, I guess the one in the Bronx being one of them, they, that's happening now? And what's, are they on different timelines? Are they, are they, is it expected to come to city council all at once for those different projects, or are they different U L Rs, different timelines?
There are four different projects. Queens Future scoped in December, Western Rail Yard scoped last week, and the other two projects will be scoping soon. So they're all on slightly staggered timelines, but the goal is, they all have to certify by the end of the year in order to meet the state's timeline of being through the process by the summer of next year.
Which is a new timeline, so we.
Yeah, it's.
We're living in a lot of unknowns here. And just last questions, if they did go later, are your, your, the text has June 30th, 2025 is the date, I believe, is like one of the threshold questions here. If they, if that were, the applications gets pushed back another six months or three months, we have to come back and amend that date, is that correct?
If they miss the sunset date, then, yeah, it's over with, it's done.
No, no, what I'm saying is if, sorry, my question was confusing, if an applicant, if the state pushes back the deadline further, they've already pushed it back, if they pushed it back further, the application process didn't even open up until July 1st of next year, all of them would be out of compliance with what we're doing here today.
That's right.
And so there's a, a question of whether to create a deadline that then the state has to also meet because of our criteria and this sort of city-state relationship. But what happens if the application doesn't even open until July of next year?
Then there would be no application submitted by that subset provision date.
And so then we would have to do something, another action through the.
And the, I just note in the schedule that the state was talking about yesterday, they're expecting a deadline for applications in the first quarter of 2025, which would give some leeway with our June 30th, 2025 date for sunsetting.
For sure, if they meet that, which has not been the case to date by any.
They, they, when they made that announcement yesterday, they were aware of our date, because that's now out in public. So yes, I'm hoping that they would not do something that would upset our, the text amendment.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers. Councilmember Mar Marado, followed by Councilmember Boxer, and just wanted to announce, we've been joined by Councilmember Hanks remotely.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Powers, you asked a lot of my questions, thank you. So I just wanted to confirm that parkland alienate, the parkland alienation process has to be completely done within the first quarter of 2025 for the three proposed sites.
The parkland alienation process, I believe, needs to be done by the deadline for, which will be after applications are due, for getting all local zoning approvals or local land use approvals. So I don't, the state hasn't precisely said when that is, but that's probably in July of 2025, somewhere in that date.
So somewhere around there.
And then, of course, the legislature will, you know, only be in session, I don't know what their date is, but they won't be in session, you know, over December next year, so it would have to be done by the end of the session.
And how long does the typical process take? Besides the text amendment, if we didn't create this, how long would each application take to process?
So it's, it depends on each application and how difficult it would be. So, for example, I mentioned the two existing buildings that are already up in Midtown. Those would probably take less time, because it's already got an envelope, it's already got, you know, a built, it's already in existence. So typically, a very difficult project that goes through scoping takes three years?
Three years?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Also, as far as, does DCP have any issue with removing this much discretion and power from the local stakeholder, holders for the sake of speeding up the process, being it's something so permanent?
So we totally understand the concern. This was, we've heard this many times in the public review process, and so we totally acknowledge that. But in order to meet this timeframe, to add the use, just to add the use into the zoning text, this is the best way we can do it. And we think that the CAC process is a public review process that takes care of a similar, it has many of the same elements as U L R does. It has, going to have public hearings, it's going to have up to two public hearings. City planning only has one public hearing. It has the borough president in the CAC, the borough president and is, goes through U L R, and, and comments on the U L R, and the community boards are, can be involved that attend the hearings, make comments. Local city council member.
Yes.
Is on the CAC, so they have local city council member review of the application. So a lot of these elements are very similar to U L R. So we think it's somewhat duplicative to have both processes, and the commission, city planning commission, approved it.
Okay.
Last week.
And when does the environmental review process actually take place in, in this entire process, once it gets to the CAC?
So this one is a little bit complicated, because the four projects that are going through U L R have their own environmental reviews now.
Yes.
The other projects are being, their environmental review is through the state environmental review process. So they need to be, I mean, we assume that they're, they're starting their review of how their, the impacts, going through the list of, of issues related to the development, and the state is handling those applications. And I don't know if there's a completion date for when those have to be done, for the state process?
Yeah, the state hasn't announced or, or said when the reviews that are being under the state umbrella will be, you know, are proceeding. But I think they are all, are at least beginning around now, if they haven't already started.
Now, as far as the Bronx site is concerned, there is a lot of environmental concerns between traffic, being it was a landfill at one point. How can I be involved in that process of the environmental review, or how can I be involved with receiving the information as it's going on?
Sure. So the applicant team, I'm hoping, has been in contact with you, and they've had some discussions with that. The application for the demapping, so this, the alienation legislation is going to the state now, so there's a public record of that, and the mapping action is going, going to go through U L R this year, and that's going to be coming out to the community board. So that's, you're highly involved with that.
I just, I just have one more question. So my concern is, they're doing an environmental review, especially on a traffic study, but we have an Amazon facility that's not even used, it's like a 30,000-square-foot facility that's not even used to the fullest capacity. How could you do an environmental or traffic review, review on something that's not even complete, and it's literally less than a mile away from there, and it's all one way in, one way out?
That, that could be an excellent point. If it's not being looked at, I'm assuming it would be looked at in the environmental review, and if it's not looked at, that would be my first question to them, why aren't you looking at this?
Okay, so I need to contact Bally's to get all of this information as they're doing it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Boxer?
What's being proposed with this zoning text amendment is essentially that, instead of having both a individual U L R for each application and a community advisory committee for each application, there will be just a community advisory committee for each application. Is that another way of understanding it, stating it?
There will be nine community advisory committees for each application, and four of the projects will go through U L R for their actions that are outside of the text amendment.
Under a U L R, each proposal, each U L R involves a, an individual envi, environmental review process. Will there be an individual environmental review process for each project under the community advisory committees?
Yes.
And under a U L R, prior to the individual U L R beginning, as part of the environmental review process, there's a, a public scoping meeting to solicit comments on the draft scope from all affected and interested parties. Would that happen under the community advisory committees?
Yes, because those environmental reviews will be done under the state process, and the state process also has scoping requirements.
Under a U L R, the community, the community boards play an important role, it's, it's an advisory role, but it's an important role, and community boards have a defined period of time within the U L R process to develop and, and submit recommendations. What is the role of a community board in the community advisory board committee process?
So the state is committed to have two whole public hearings, minimum, two public hearings, and they'll be soliciting feedback from stakeholders and from the community for each of the applications. So that's where the community, and community boards and neighborhoods can voice their opinion, and they'll talk to their local city council member, and give them their opinion to the council member, and that, and the borough president, and the local assembly member, and local house representative member.
When you say a minimum of two public meetings, who decides if there's a fuller process, if there's more public meetings, if there's more opportunity for people to give feedback?
So I can't confirm this, because it's a state process, but if the C, so for example, if the CAC held two public hearings and felt that wasn't sufficient amount of public review, I would imagine they could control the, the CAC and say, we want to have another public hearing on this one issue, or on these three issues, or we want to have a public hearing to discuss mitigation, or they might have those, just with the CAC, with the applicant team. But I believe the CAC could request things and make demands of an applicant team, because they, the applicant team wants an approval from the CAC. So if the CACs, we, we want another public hearing, we want you to send these documents out, this is what we want in order for the approval.
Ostensibly, the, the elected officials that make appointments to the CACs, they'd have the ability to decide how many public meetings, what kind of public process there is, in a way?
I think they have the ability to shape that. So, for example, a, a CAC in Midtown Manhattan might have different issues with a CAC in Coney Island. So they would be emphasizing one thing over another, perhaps, and then the one in Manhattan would be emphasizing what the community board wants to see on the development site, or what they don't want to see on the development site.
Will the community advisory committees have the ability to mandate things like union employment in a way that we can in a U L R?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I, I think we're, we're not entirely sure with that specific question, and I think we need to get guidelines from the state. Do you know that one of the criteria that the state citing board needs to look at is labor agreements between the gaming facility and, and labor, and that's part of the application process? So there's, there's a fair amount of criteria related to local hiring, training, labor agreements, and, and similar types of employment-related criteria.
In a U L R, the, the size, the bulk of buildings, the look of buildings, the materials used in the buildings, the kind of lighting used in the buildings, those could all be written into the final agreement of a U L R. Is all that included in the purview of a community advisory committee?
It, it's my understanding that it is, because those are the, the details that the CACs will be discussing. You know, they'll be discussing whether you want brick, glass, et cetera, how, how the setback is, how many parking spaces. So those are all. So those are all the discussion details for the C A C. And I, it's my understanding that those would be something that would be negotiated.
Is there anything that a, a U L E R P process could mandate that a community advisory committee won't be able to mandate?
That's a good question. Well, there is a CPC report that goes, that's submitted with the U L E R P process, which is kind of the official document that has the details in it. But there will be official documents with, I can't think of anything that would be substantially different.
Very important for us to be exact. And before this, we consider advancing this, it's so important that we get all the very specific answers to these questions. Is there anything in a community advisory committee process that can be mandated, negotiated, that a U L E R P could not involve?
Well, I think, speaking as a city employee, the city, when we review projects, we do things in relationship to the rationale and what's permitted through the regulatory framework that we work within. And the city council has somewhat different ability to negotiate terms. And I believe that would be more apparent with the C A C than the city planning. But I think this is something that we'll, we'll get back to you on.
Yeah.
As to how it differs, if it differs and how it differs specifically as to what the difference is between what a U L E R P could mandate and the C A C could mandate within their purview.
One difference I've come to understand, that I've been told, is that in a U L E R P, we can't say to an applicant, we want you to write a check to this local nonprofit. And is it, you're understanding that under a community advisor committee, we could say, we want you to write a check to this nonprofit or that nonprofit?
So we're gonna, we will have to get back. I mean, the community advi, part of this process is to make sure the applicant is benefiting the community. Whether it reaches that level of specificity, I don't think we can, we can say that.
And, and we'll be getting the answers to these follow-up questions in writing? How will we be getting the answers to these follow-up questions?
Do you want them in writing? We'll give them to you in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. There being no other questions, counsel, are there any more councilmember questions for this applicant panel?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair.
There being no future questions for this applicant panel, you now excuse. Thank you so much for presenting. And please provide those answers and write into the council whenever you have. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the gaming facility text amendment remotely or in person?
Yes. So we have three people signed up remotely to testify. And we have about nine to 10 people in person also who would like to testify. We, as our normal procedure is, we will be starting with people in opposition. The people in opposition happen to be online. So we're gonna be starting with an online panel in opposition, which you may call now, Chair.
Thank you. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock. We are gonna start with our online panelists. This panelist includes Paul Devlin, Christine Gorman, and Leila Loa Gisco. We're gonna start with Paul Devlin. Paul, you may begin after sergeant-at-arms has started the clock.
You may begin.
Thank you, everyone. Hello, my name is Paul Devlin. I'm co-chair of the Clinton Hell's Kitchen Land Use Committee on Manhattan's Community Board Four. In January of this year, we voted unanimously against this zoning text amendment. This text amendment removes gaming facilities from U L E R P, therefore bypassing New York City's standard public review process and eliminating city oversight for zoning compliance of gaming facilities. The New York City Charter requires transparent public review with a predictable mandated time clock for large-scale developments. This thorough process through U L E R P ensures full technical analysis by the impacted communities. Removing gaming facilities from the U L E R P process eliminates the opportunity for full community input and review. This zoning text, as admitted by D C P testimony today, also means that the city's professional planning staff would be technically removed from the planning of these sites. Let's be clear, casinos can gain approval under the current structure following standard U L E R P procedures. But D C P contends that an individual U L E R P process for each site would be overly time-consuming and delay the New York State license approval. Perhaps we could use some of the million-dollar application fees to fund more resources for D C P to adequately review the applications. I'd ask those of you who represent parts of the city that don't have proposed gaming facility sites, if you would want your constituent voices taken away, if the state decided they wanted to put in something like a NASCAR racetrack or a sports stadium and proposed bypassing the U L E R P process, would you be happy to tell your community boards that their voices weren't needed to analyze the impact of large-scale developments in your neighborhoods? Our board has asked that instead of bypassing the U L E R P process, New York State extended casino siting timeline so that each proposed site go through an appropriate review. As Chair Riley noted, and based on recent news coverage, it seems the state has already adjusted the timeline and won't be ready to approve licenses until later in 2025. And to echo Councilmember Schulman's comments, the city should not set a precedent of adopting a text amendment to bypass the standard review public process to accommodate an uncertain and undefined state timeline. I urge you all to vote no. Please don't usurp the U L E R P. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we will have Christine, Christine Gorman. Our timer isn't working, so I'll be timing you, Christine, and I will let you know when your time is up. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Christine Gorman, and I live in Hell's Kitchen. I'm the president of the West 55th Street Block Association, as well as president of Hell's Kitchen Democrats. My neighbors and I are opposed to the gaming facility text amendment submitted by the New York City Department of Planning. I will make two points right at the outset, and they're really simple. If the state's timeline is too tight, then the state should adjust its timeline. It's as simple as that. Secondly, you can make casinos legally permitted in New York City without giving away traditional community review of whatever gets built. This application represents a cynical land and power grab on behalf of one industry. The city is trying to do an end run around the public input process that has existed since 1975 for neighborhood development. D C P contends that an individual U L E R P process for each site would be time-consuming and delay the New York State license approval. By this rationale, any and all public review of land use applications might be considered time-consuming and simply eliminated, eroding the democratic participation of citizens in planning the future of their communities. I mean, why even bother with elections when it comes right down to it? So messy, expensive, and time-consuming. Are you really going to vote against a transparent and democratic process that has, for all its flaws, since 1975, served to navigate the competing interests and adjudicate the development needs of our various communities? This has nothing to do with whether you are for or against casinos in any particular area. The gaming facilities as defined in this text amendment would include parking garages, hotels, theaters, convention centers, restaurants, bars, and other non-gaming uses related to gaming. That's a loophole.
Christine, your time is up, so you can wrap up.
Okay, so it's a big loophole. And I would say, I would urge you not to bargain our voice away. Please don't be bamboozled. Please vote against the gaming facility text amendment, application number N 2401 79 Z R Y. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we will have Leila Loa Gisco. Leila, if you can hear me, you may begin. Leila, if you can hear me, you may begin. Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, mind if you?
Um, Leila, Ms. Gisco, you're breaking up. Ms. Gisco, you're breaking up. Can you hear me? Okay, Ms. Gisco, you're breaking up. We're gonna try to come back to you. We're gonna go to in-person. If you cannot testify, you could also submit your opposition online to us at landusetestimony.council.gov. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go to in-person. I'm gonna start with Keith Suber. Oh, I'm sorry, before we go to in-person, do any councilmembers have any questions for this applicant panel? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to Keith Suber, Zuli Yang, Mary Miville Shazada, and Anthony Batista. If I butchered your names, please forgive me. I'm gonna call the names one more time, okay? Anthony Batista, Marie Shazada, Zuli Zheng, and Keith Suber. Once again, if I butchered your names, please forgive me. We will start with Keith Suber.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Keith Suber. I'm a longtime community resident of Coney Island, Brooklyn. And I am in favor of the text amendment because, for one, it can strengthen the economy for our entire city. And for two, it can strengthen the economy for Coney Island, Brooklyn. I've worked with the developers in the past. They delivered on what they said they would do. They, they gave me free space to do an apprenticeship program. I've worked with the Chickasaw Nation, Schenectady, New York, when they built that. So I'm very much aware of what jobs can do to change our community. Um, you know, when there's a lot of individuals that don't have anything, as a proud union member, I can say, retire, that Local 79 has changed my life. It took me off the streets, put me in a position where I could take care of my family. And I'm just hoping that my testimony and others will be able to resonate and let the people know this is something that the Coney Island community needs because we, we're dormant during the winter months. There's, there's nothing going on there. So we would like to see the progress of this move forward. Like I said, the main thing, union jobs, my focus, something that I've, very, very dear to my heart because it can change your life, because it's changed minds. The senior centers, I'm quite sure the developers are willing to sit down with the community residents and work out issues like traffic and different things. The boardwalk needs to be repaired, we have some flooding issues. And I think that the casino would bring some revenue to our community to have those things built up, especially with the flooding. Again, with the senior centers, there's a lot of nonprofit organizations out there, football teams, basketball teams, where the children need help. And I say, the more we go, the more we grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next, we'll have Ms. Marie.
Yes, ma'am.
You can use the one in front of you.
Yeah, okay. Close this one. Good afternoon. I'm 100% in favor of the gaming facility text amendment. Why? Well, first, let me introduce myself. My name is Marie Miville Shazada. I am born and raised in New York City, in the best borough, Brooklyn. Sorry, guys. I am not only a city resident, but I'm also a New York City Department of Education employee, a business owner in Coney Island, I'm a community advocate in Coney Island. I don't look at this in one level, I look at this as a whole. Passing the gaming facility text amendment that proposes a citywide zoning text amendment to allow gaming facilities, will allow for casinos to be built in and established in New York City. This would open the floodgates of investment and revenue back into our city. It would add a stream of tourism and commerce, which the city has lost in recent years. Moreover, approving the casino in Coney Island, South Brooklyn, would not only help the city, but Coney Island itself. As my partner has said, there's so much going on in Coney Island. It is not like Hell's Kitchen, it's not like the other parts of the borough. Coney Island is in need. We have a community out there that only is booming two months out of the year. The other 10 months, it's, it's economic desert. We right now have Coney Island Brewery, which is on West 17th, closed. Riot Aid on 3001 Mermaid Avenue, closed. The Juice Bar on Mermaid Avenue on West 19th, also just closed. Boost Mobile on West 15th, also closed. As well as so many other businesses closing. Our business owners are suffering. They do not make ends meet from day to day on those 10 months out of the year. So those two months, you know, great, but we need more.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Anthony Batista.
Good afternoon. You know, to piggyback off of, you know, the residence that I, that I share the Coney Island with, you know, in the beginning, I, I was against the casino, the initial intent. You say casino, you know, I'm thinking about my kids, I'm like, you know, the crime. But then you sit back and you realize, for one, the location is, it's not a high-crime neighborhood, it's not a high-crime area. Number two, the economic growth, you know, we need it. You know, I'm the executive director for the Coney Island Anti-Violence Collaborative. I have 32 kids at a time during the week. They have nothing to do, nothing to do. I can't speak for the other developers that's trying to bring a casino, but I can speak on the ones that's coming to us. And they've been, since the beginning, trying and trying to establish their own, their own board of community members to see what do we want and how can they help the community? And that's what helped me put myself in a position where I can understand, okay, this is gonna be good for the community. The kids are gonna have somewhere to go, that's gonna be work. You know, in Coney Island, I don't know if anybody knows, but in Coney Island, like, the majority of the people in Coney Island, I was looking at the census last night, make between 10,000 to 19,000 a year. That's a joke. Then let's add the fact that they have to tran, they have to take transit, take away that almost $3, that's almost $6 round trip. A casino, they're gonna be able to just walk on, walk on in, they go to transit, they make more money. You know, we've been talking about unions, you know, we've, we've been speaking about moving the storefronts, people are scared that the local community, the local stores and businesses are gonna lose business. But we're trying to implement, we're working with the developers to move them from where they're at to be in a storefront. So there's, there's an open line of communication, so the developers are actually trying to work with the community. That's what I can speak on.
Thank you. And last, Julie Zheng.
Hello, my name is Zuli Zheng. I live in Queens. I'm a, a union member since 1998. I, I'm currently now, I'm currently a side attendant in Resort, Resort World, New York City, in Queens. As a father of three kids, my life is not easy, but I can feel relieved knowing that union can provide me lots of benefits, like decent living wage, health care, even pension plans. I'm happy that with union benefit, I can make better life, I can give my kids better education. Casino jobs are union jobs, which can benefit many people, many workers, just like me. So we support a casino. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Batista. So, Mr. Batista, in the beginning, you said you were totally against it. And I think you alluded to, you believed it would bring crime to the area. And now you support it. So can you just explain that a little bit more? Why were you against it in the beginning? What did the developers do specifically that made you feel like, I can start supporting this project now?
So, in the beginning, yes, I was against it because of the crime. That's the initial thing. You, you start thinking people are gonna start robbing, you know, come on, you know, we're gonna be honest, we live in, it's poverty in Coney Island. People see casinos, people see people making money, they're gonna think that they're gonna, they're gonna try to rob them. But number one, where the loca- But number one, where the location of the casino is, that's not where the crime is happening. The crime is happening in the west end. If anybody knows anything about Coney Island, the west end are the high numbers. Where the casino is coming, it's the low numbers. That's number one. To change my mind, they didn't really do anything, like, do anything to change my mind. To be honest, it was my daughter, my thirteen-year-old daughter, that told me that. You know, you're saying that people have, have a habit or are gonna do things. If people are messed up, they're gonna do it anyway. They need help. So a casino is not gonna stop it. They're gonna rob, whether they're gonna rob you in a, in front of a casino, they're gonna rob you coming out of the apartment. It's my thirteen-year-old daughter that told me this, which led me to go sit down with them. So it's not like they necessarily did anything. They were open to communicate with me. They were open to see, how can we stop that? And they, we spoke about a lot of things. We spoke about working with the security, getting, getting, you know, fellow veterans like myself to get on the task force for the security. You know, we spoke about them giving back to the community, to nonprofits like mine, that we're anti-violence. You know, 'cause once the community starts seeing that, okay, hey, look, they're actually helping the nonprofits assist the kids. It's gonna, that's a big, that's a big deterrent. Parents are gonna jump in like, hey, you guys better not mess with that, mess with those people. This is where, you know, they're helping us with this. They're helping, helping us with A, B, and C. So it's not necessarily that they did anything. It's just an open line of communication.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Law, you have any question? Alright, thank you. This applicant, uh, panel's excuse. I'm gonna call on Erica Rambert, Deborah Carter, Jamie Smar, Sharon Ocean, and Jacqueline Laurie.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Rambert, and I'm a longtime resident of Coney Island. And I'm also the president of the Isaiah Whitehead Foundation, a not-for-profit organization dedicated to enhancing the lives of children and disadvantaged and marginalized communities like Coney Island through fostering, through fostering education, promoting health, and developing skills. I urge the city council, council, in the strongest terms possible, to follow the city planning commission lead in passing the important gaming facility text amendment change and make sure each of the proposals are on equal footing to compete with one of New York City's casino licenses. I have lived and raised my family in Coney Island and have been fortunate enough to also be able to position myself to give back to the community I love because my, because of my son's successful professional basketball career. Excuse me, I have a cold. I'm sorry. I, I see every day what families go through to survive. This community has floundered from neglect of all levels of government and needs a full-time, year-round economic development and investment. That is what the casino proposal will do. We shouldn't miss out on the opportunity to bring much-needed economic investments to our community's career-building union jobs to those who need them the most and support for youth and families in terms of funding for needed facilities, arts, sports, and educational programs. Hearing about proposals like Coney Island's that will partner with local educational institutions to train and educate our young people for careers that sustain families in an opportunity to important, to pass, to, it's important to pass, it's too important to pass up. Families want to be able to stay and raise their families in Coney Island. By getting this right, we can say, we can do that with your help and support.
Thank you. Um, Deborah Carter.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
You can press the button, Ms. Carter.
Sorry. Good afternoon. I'm Deborah Carter. I'm a longstanding resident of sixty-plus years in Coney Island. Um, all my life, I lived out there in Coney Island. I've seen some things that come through. But I am for the casino because I, I believe in my heart that it would bring jobs for all of residents in, um, Coney Island. I dealt with a lot of residents in my time, in my forty-seven years of being the president for Gravesend Houses and also being the vice president for the Brooklyn South Council of Presidents, which held twenty-one developments as well as far as Coney Island, for the whole Brooklyn South. Um, I believe that there should be, um, programs to offer these young people or people of all kinds for, uh, these positions to teach them how these jobs work, they operate, and to keep, continue to keep those jobs in our community so far, so long, that we have had some to come in our communities and give them, offer them jobs, but also took jobs away from them. So I believe that there should be apprenticeship program to show them how to really operate in these positions, to keep these positions. They need to pay their bills, their schooling, um, daycare, um, you know, jobs, even to, to have a meal, to eat in, in our, um, Coney Island, um, area of Brooklyn South. And I do believe that if someone would come in, if this casino would come in and provide jobs for the residents, for the people to live in the Coney Island area, we can bring our community together as a whole and build in the community and make our community a stronger community.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Uh, next, Jamie Smar.
My name is Jamie Smar. I serve as the CEO of the New York City Housing Partnership, a nonprofit and public-private intermediary created by Edward Koch and David Rockefeller in 1983. Since our establishment, the Housing Partnership has created or preserved more than eighty-three thousand units of affordable housing, uh, in the five boroughs. Today, I urge your thoughtful consideration of the housing crisis as you deliberate on the proposed zoning text amendment for gaming. In exchange for these gaming licenses, everyday New Yorkers should be gaining as many benefits as possible. The zoning text proposal before you removes zoning barriers to the creation of casinos. And I would ask that benefits like affordable housing that come as part of these proposals receive the same treatment. Again, every large-scale development opportunity like mixed-use casino development should also bring with it affordable housing. It is evident that we are facing a crisis of monumental proportions when it comes to housing in New York City. I am aware of the ambitious housing goals set forth by our state and our city, including the governor's aim for eight-hundred thousand new units statewide and the mayor's vision for five-hundred thousand new units in the city and the framework established by the speaker for shared responsibility in housing creation. Many of you echoed similar commitments to addressing our housing shortage. As we deliberate on the proposed zoning text amendment, we must seize the opportunity to leverage substantial investment in affordable housing in exchange for these gaming licenses. I commend those who have heard our calls and recognize the importance of housing, including it as a component of their proposal. Their acknowledgement of this responsibility and responsiveness to the calls from elected officials at all levels should be encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Laurie.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Lowery. I'm a resident of, um, Community Board Four in Hell's Kitchen. I, um, would like to, um, just add to the wonderful, eloquent comments made by Paul Devlin and Christine Gorman, um, that the idea of taking away our community voice is very troublesome to me. I don't see why that would happen, why some of these proposals would have the U-Lerp process and then others wouldn't. To lump us all together in one U-Lerp process ta, takes away the difference between the different proposals and the different neighborhoods. As many of my fellow New Yorkers have said, their neighborhood may benefit from a casino, and they may have very little opposition to it. That's not true where I live. And I think the, um, man from the, uh, city who works for the city said, well, it would be more efficient. But his efficiency takes away my community voice. And so I would say, um, I'm in opposition to this text amendment and let each proposal have its own U-Lerp process.
Thank you. And last, uh, Sharone Ocean.
Good morning, Councilor. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to speak. Uh, my name is Sharone Ocean. I am currently a resident in Coney Island. I am a longtime generational family member of Coney Island. Uh, my family go back in Coney Island at least sixty-plus years. I do see that there may be some concerns to how things may be done politically and all the policies and stuff like that. But I am a resident in Coney Island, and I've been coming back and forth from Coney Island for many years. And I say in support of the text amendment zoning because there's a lot of things that's happening in Coney Island that a lot of youth are economically deprived. They don't have a lot of opportunities to, uh, just resources that can help them elevate and become something or even extend their dreams beyond Coney Island. There are individuals in Coney Island that have done well with themselves and their families and things of that nature. But there's far too many that hasn't. And being a, a citizen and a resident of New York, Brooklyn, all of my life, I have seen some of the trials and tribulations that some of the youth have experienced. So if there's some type of business infrastructure that may be able to come into a already landmark type of, uh, revenue, already landmark, existing revenue, uh, industry that can help the community, I would be for it. And I, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Ocean. Uh, there being no questions for this applicant panel. Thank you so much for your testimony. He's here today. Counselor, are there any more members of the public who wish to testify on this application?
No, Chair. There's time. There are no other members here in chambers signed up to testify nor online.
Thank you. There being no members of the public who wish to testify on pre-considered LU relating to the gaming facility text amendment, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open, uh, the public hearing on LU's forty-six and forty-seven related to 341 Tenth Street Special Permit Proposal in Councilmember Veiler's district. This proposal consists also of LU's forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three, and we held a public hearing about the entirety of the project on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. We are holding a second hearing specifically about the special permits that applicant is seeking because the application for the special permit were not yet called up by the city council when we held our first hearing on March twelfth. Given that we already heard the applicant team at the first hearing, I would directly open this hearing for public testimony. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify regarding the special permit application related to the 341 Tenth Street Proposal remotely or in person?
Yes, Chair. We have two people signed up in person, and we are currently checking if anybody has signed up online.
I would like to call Amanda Trotman and Ravi Sharma to the podium. Is Ravi Sharma here?
He was here. He might literally have run to the bathroom. He was here waiting for these last couple hours.
Okay, you may begin.
Yeah, I can go first. Okay. I live on Ninth Street with my husband, three kids, and our rent-stabilized tenant, who's eighty years old and pays five hundred dollars a month for her one-bedroom. Um, we are against this project, along with all of our neighbors on Ninth and Tenth Street. Um, I've testified at all of these different meetings. Um, and today I wanted to not repeat myself, but just emphasize that Stellar is trying to erect forty-foot trusses, um, literally in, on top of us, in the backyards of thirteen multifamily buildings. It's not something that they've emphasized, how tight the space is between the building where they want to build. Uh, and in some places, it's inches, um, to buildings that are there. This is a doctor's office. Um, this is another house. It, it just is physically impossible to do what they're wanting to do without destroying these buildings all along, um, all along the, um, the street there. Um, so we gave you a packet of articles at the last hearing that was a tiny sampling of the countless articles published against Stellar because they have a pattern and even a business model, as they've explained on their own website, of getting permission and rezoning permits from city councils by saying they will build affordable housing, only then to find ways to inflict massive rent hikes and eviction notices on tenants. The last time I was here, um, the council heard a few tenants Stellar had handpicked and brought with them to testify that all was well under their leadership at 341 Tenth Street. Who knows how they incentivize them, but we need you to know the truth that at every level of meeting until this project got to this council, neighbors on Ninth and Tenth Street have been testifying arm-in-arm with dozens of tenants from 341 Tenth Street who organized themselves to appear, holding signs, which I will email you, testifying how consistently horrible their management of the building has been for years. They are, they are not truthful, and they have a pattern of bamboozling council members and neighborhoods. Please protect us from them. Please vote no, or at least require complete plans, not just proposals, before you say okay. Please, please.
Thank you, Ms. Trotman. Um, is it possible, Sergeant, can we check the bathroom to see if Ravi is available?
Great, thank you.
So, Ms. Trotman, how far do you live from, uh, the, the development that Stellar, um, manages that they had the other residents here from?
Yeah, I could throw a ball at it. I live ten feet, though, from where my kids play is, is where they want to erect these trusses. So literally in that yard, that's taken from my yard, those photos that you have there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, it looks like we lost Ravi Sharma. Uh, so, Ravi, if you are watching this, you can also submit your testimony to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov.
Great.
Uh, there being no questions, this applicant panel's excuse. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on LU's forty-six and forty-seven regarding the special permit application relating to the thirty, 341 Tenth Street Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the public hearing on pre-considered LU relating to the forty-one Richards Street rezoning proposal located in Councilmember Veiler's district in Red Hook, Brooklyn. The proposal consists of a mixed-use development containing light manufacturing uses, commercial office space, and some ground-floor commercial retail. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online. You may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landyouth. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you may always do that, but, excuse me, you can always do so by emailing it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Counsel, can we please call the first panel for this item?
The first panel consists of Kevin Williams, Charles, uh, Calgony, Jim, uh, Tupakis, please excuse me if I just butchered your name, and Emily Simmons.
Counsel, can we please administer the affirmation?
Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record? All of you, please. Could you please raise your right hand? Oh, please excuse us for a second. Okay, so let's start that up. Could you please state your name for the record? Thank you. And I, um, I'll administer the oath, and then I'll ask my question. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in response to councilmember, uh, questions in your statement?
Thank you.
And, and, I mean, to clarify, Chair, you're all presenting on behalf of the applicant, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the view in public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'd just ask you, please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin. You may begin.
Chair Riley and subcommittee members. I'm Emily Simons from the Law Office of Emily Simons, P L L C, and Land Use Council for the applicant, fifty-four Richard Street, LLC. With me today are Jim Tampakis, the applicant, Kevin Williams, the environmental consultant, and Charles Calgony, our architect. The action before you is a proposed rezoning from, I'm sorry, from M one-one to M one-five of four parcels consisting of lots thirteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-five on block five-one-two in the Red Hook community of Brooklyn. The rezoning would extend a hundred and twenty-five feet from the west side of Richard Street between Commerce and Sebring Streets. Lot thirteen and twenty are the proposed development site. Lot twenty-two is the Firehouse Engine Company, two-oh-two, and part of lot twenty-five is the Lodge Red Hook, a transient hotel. Three, the rezoning is being proposed in order to facilitate a, I'm sorry, an eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six-square-foot, seven-story-plus cellar, mixed-use building consisting of light manufacturing, related commercial uses, and supporting retail uses. Forty-one, forty-one accessory parking spaces are also being proposed. Directly surrounding the proposed development to the north, south, east, and west is an M one-one manufacturing district with one, two, and three-story buildings. Southeast of the M one-one district is an R five district consisting of residential and community facility uses. To the east of the, to the east of the, uh, uh, R five is an M, is it, I'm sorry, is an R six, R six, uh, district that contains the, uh, Red Hook, the, I'm sorry, the Ninety Red Hook houses. Red Hook was once a flourishing manufacturing community. Today, little manufacturing goes on in the existing buildings that are now obsolete due to small floor plates, low ceilings, and, I'm sorry, and numerous floor columns. There's insufficient space within these buildings to accommodate necessary loading docks and, and parking, I'm sorry, and freight elevators.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt you, but we also have your slides up, and we, we're not quite sure if you would want. Okay. Just for our Zoom team, you can keep the slide deck as it is.
That's fine. Emily, that's fine.
No, I'm, I'm just gonna go through sort of an introduction, and then, uh, Kevin will be working the PowerPoint. There is insufficient space within, with, there's insufficient space within these buildings to accommodate necessary loading docks and freight elevators. This has led to the disappearance of a robust manufacturing district that was once the economic base of Red Hook. The applicant is seeking to bring light manufacturing along with, along with supporting commercial use and retail use consisting of pop-up stores that will showcase products manufactured in the building and will cater, uh, building. A proposed deli or cafe will cater to the building's tenants. Light manufacturing, artisanal entrepreneurs, startups, and incubator businesses, along with traditional light manufacturing uses, I'm sorry, specialty uses are envisioned at forty-one, uh, Richard Street. Light manufacturing uses such as woodworking, production of bakery goods, custom apparel, and graphic arts are examples of the kind of uses anticipated at forty-one Richard Street. In closing, the proposed rezoning would revitalize this lifeless and unproductive sector and would begin to address the growing need for light manufacturing in Red Hook. Thank you.
If we could just advance through the slides quickly. I'll be very brief. If you have any questions, Commissioner Riley, I'll, uh, I'll, um, allow you, you know, to ask me about them. Keep, go to the next slide, please. So this just shows the context in, in Red Hook. Uh, go to the next slide. It's a little bit more, keep on going. A lot of these were already discussed. This shows you the manufacturing environment, basically in purple, uh, surrounding, uh, the site location. Next slide. Um, again, hard to read from this point, but it shows you the M one-one, uh, in which the context of, of the rezoning is proposed. Next slide. And there's a visual aerial. Next slide. And there's some street views. Um, you can see the context of the areas. You know, warehousing, manufacturing uses. Next slide. Keep on going. Keep on going. And so at this point, I'd like to hand it off to Jim Tampakis just to make a brief statement about the intent, uh, for the site. He's a long-term, uh, operator and, and owner of the site and the neighborhood.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Tampakis. I run a machine shop. Uh, we're a ship repair, an old ship repair company. We've been in this, uh, right across the street and in this one building, uh, for approximately fifty years. Uh, we, uh, you know, when, when I was growing up, uh, Red Hook was all manufacturing. Uh, we used to bring in ships. We used to fabricate specialty items, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, they've kind of vanished, and, you know, when we had ships coming in, we used to just, we never had to go three blocks away to take care of all of our needs, of all of our repairs, et cetera. Uh, and today I wanna try and, I'm pushing manufacturing, and, and that's what I grew up with. We have a machine shop we still have, which is across the street, and where, uh, we have lathes and metalworking things and, you know, we're, I'm just trying to pursue the type of work that we did for the last fifty years in the neighborhood, and I really feel strongly about it. Uh, my wife is a baker. She was, had a bakery there. She closed down with, uh, with COVID. Uh, but, you know, we're going to be bringing things like that back. And, uh, you know, it's gonna be a specialty building. We're building ground up. We're in the flood zone. We got killed with Sandy. Uh, you know, and that's basically my thing. Thank you.
Next slide.
Uh, next slide, please.
Keep on going.
Yeah, keep going. Hi, I'm Chip Calcani. I'm the architect for the, for the group here. Um, this, uh, is a sixty, as, as says here, sixteen thousand, five hundred square-foot, um, site size, and we're looking at, uh, building, uh, a building of about a hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. That, um, that's the total volume. Uh, the first two floors are parking and a, and a small lobby, and then some small commercial spaces as well. Next slide, please. Those, uh, the, as you can see in the white, uh, basically is the parking spaces. In fact, the entire building is based around the parking spaces. Structurally, it makes them, it's the most efficient use where we can have a heavy weight structure for manufacturing and the kind of uses that we foresee here. So, um, the yellow spaces you see along the top are small storefronts. They may also be educational spaces as well for, uh, training of trades. Um, it's, it's use is fungible, and it's, it's a flex-use space that's built for flooding as well. So what's fascinating about this project, at least for me as an architect, is that this space is built to flood. It's a, it's almost like a Venetian project in the sense that Venice floods every year. The buildings there are, accommodate that, and this does as well. There's drive waterproofing around all the first-floor spaces, and then, um, some support spaces up on the second floor. All of the, uh, plumbing, electrical, and support structures are all lifted off the first floor. Typically, you'd see those in a basement or a first-floor location. These will all be for, uh, doing that. So actually, uh, dealing with evacuating the building under flood conditions is part of the fascinating solution of this. How do you deal with water levels that could be shifting? So all of these have been taken into account with the design of the building. Next slide, please. And then, um, there's a mixed use here. Uh, zoning wanted us to look at having office space within the space. I think that, uh, manufacturing use is going to have associated office space with it. The office space is currently shown in yellow, and the, uh, the manufacturing is shown in blue, but these would be divided through the building throughout, and there's a certain percentage allotted for each of these uses, should they be necessary. What's great, I think, about it is the setbacks are actually lower than are required by the zoning that we're asking to be done. Uh, this is part of Jim's concern about not creating a hugely impactful, uh, building on the site, but actually working contextually within there. Next slide, please. And just a, uh, you can see the parking is on the lower level, and the bulk of the building now is up, above. Next slide. The basic design of the building is a, is a, is a high-tech building, but it's, um, because of befitting the kind of uses that are in it, there'll be flexible planning, allowing for all sorts of different mechanical systems to be threaded through the building to support the uses that are there, including water storage and other, and other aspects just to deal with effluent from the manufacturing. And the design partie is basically taking elements from the local area and applying them as a facade element to, to sort of ameliorate between the newness of the building and also tying back into the past. That's it.
Is that the end of the presentation? All right. Thank you so much. Um, I have a few questions, and I'm gonna ask some questions on behalf of Councilmember Vela's. So this proposal is a bit unusual in the, you are proposing to have more manufacturing space than office space under the proposed M one-five, which is encouraging because we do need more manufacturing jobs. Can you speak more on how you arrived at this particular mix of uses?
So you're, you're, um, asking about the office space?
No, I'm asking about you're proposing more manufacturing, uh, space.
So the, the, the office space is going to be complementary towards the manufacturing. There's gonna, it's gonna be basically marketing, accounting, those type of, uh, facilities that I think that are gonna be required for these small businesses. We're looking to, to create, I mean, there's a lot of demand. The neighborhood still has some manufacturing. There's chocolate manufacturers, there's caviar manufacturers, there's fish companies, uh, there's a lot of bakeries. You know, I'm, this is within Red Hook. You know, they've kind of scattered, and, you know, we're looking to put up something that's gonna go up, that's gonna be out of the floodplain. Uh, my machine shop got killed during Sandy. We had, you know, forty-two to forty-eight inches of water in the street. And, I mean, the DDC is in the process. I'm very involved with the neighborhood. The DDC is in the process of trying to flood-proof everything, but we're still, we need all our backups because we don't wanna have the same kind of disasters that we had the last time around. So, but again, from the manufacturer's point of view, I, I wanna focus on manufacturing, and city planning was pushing us also to put in some offices so that this way we would be able to complement the manufacturing.
Thank you. Uh, can you speak about why you included forty-one parking spots, although it was not included, and whoever, who would have access to this parking?
So, I'm down there fifty years. The, the last ten, fifteen years, parking is horrible. You drive around and around and around. If we have all of these new businesses coming in, and people are coming either to work or trying to, you know, uh, the, 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 the existing business, the new businesses that are gonna be coming in wanna bring in clientele, you know, we wanna be able to have them come in and not have to spend a half hour driving around the neighborhood. It's something that wasn't required, but I really feel strongly that parking is a great incentive for the businesses to have them, uh, flow and, and survive. And, you know, like I said, the people that are working in the business, they'll have some spots as well as, you know, people that are gonna be visiting, you know, all of these different facilities for work.
Do you have a tenant for the retail space?
No. The, the retail space is twenty-seven hundred square feet. So it's really minuscule, and the thought on the retail space, again, city planning wanted us to beautify the neighborhood and put some retail space. So, uh, you know, we're looking at possibly putting in one or two businesses that are gonna be fixed businesses, and then the rest, let them, uh, be pop-ups for the manufacturers upstairs. Give them two, three months out of the year. Let them come downstairs, like, you know, let them just basically showcase their items and, and try and bring people in. I, 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 I think that would be a good idea, whether they're manufacturing, you know, wood manufacturers, if they're, uh, machine shops, or whatever the case is, you know. And the other thing is that we have, uh, uh, NITIA nearby. I've been in contact with the president of NITIA. We're talking about possibly creating a lot of jobs for the locals. I mean, I think it's just a win-win situation for everybody to, to, to do this kind of project.
Thank you. I would now ask, uh, four questions from Councilmember Vela's, whose district this represents. Uh, what aspects of this proposed development will enhance and amplify the neighborhood's character in Red Hook?
Well, we're gonna be, we're, we're looking at bringing in approximately a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty new jobs. And our first step is gonna be to bring in employees from within the neighborhood. So I, I, I think, you know, we're gonna beautify. The buildings are currently horrible, you know, looking. The one building, forty-one Richard Street, is, it's a twelve-and-a-half-thousand-square-foot space. It was an old machine shop that was there for, since World War Two. And, uh, on the twelve-and-a-half-foot, uh, twelve-and-a-half-thousand-foot site, it's a four-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot facility. Again, it got crushed during Sandy. And, I, I mean, it, it, it's gonna be a big upgrade for the neighborhood.
And Jim, let me, maybe, Commissioner Riley, if I may, uh, respond to that. So in terms of neighborhood character, it's something we evaluate in the environmental assessment. And here, the main purpose of the rezoning was to make a resilient building, one that could withstand the elements. The second one is to make a modern manufacturing building that, uh, embody the challenge from a neighborhood redevelopment challenge that Mr. Tampakis entered into that was fostered by Economic Development Corporation. And part of that was to directly respond to these neighborhood character components. Uh, there's been a reduction in manufacturing space, which has long been the character of this sort of coastal manufacturing environment, despite a demand for stable and affordable space. It responds to need for smaller, flexible manufacturing spaces with high-quality amenities, not just the grab-bag of very old, dilapidated buildings that are serving the manufacturing economy right now and do not meet the needs of modern manufacturing in the area. It provides, um, advantages of Red Hook in terms of business location adjacent to trucking routes, shipping locations, coastal access, improved bus and ferry service, and high-quality commercial districts that are close by. In addition, by creating a, or supporting a walkable street here, by putting a little bit of local retail on it, you, and you invigorate what is pretty much a street dead zone, which, as well as a part of this project, they'll have to put in street trees. They'll have to repair the sidewalk associated with these that have long been damaged by manufacturing uses, you know, over the many decades. So, um, I think in that way, the idea is to restore what Red Hook once was and to reinvigorate, uh, this section of Richard Street that, that, as you can see, there's been a lot of work going in Red Hook in general.
Thank you, Kevin. The proposed M one-dash-five zoning allows a flexible mix of non-residential uses with no requirement to include space for any industrial businesses. Can the community be confident that this development will maintain the industrial character of Red Hook?
We're, we're looking to blend. We want, like I said, I've been in the neighborhood for fifty years, and I feel for everybody in the area, and we're, we're looking to cater to the neighborhood and what we always were in the neighborhood.
In the land use application, you refer to the light industrial use as boutique manufacturing. Can you explain what that means and how it would look here at the proposed development?
So, I mean, we're looking to go after startups as well. So we want- So, we want some smaller bakeries, we want food manufacturers to come in, we want specialty manufacturers. I have a tenant now that's across the street who does, he does like gift things where he has little CNC machines and he makes different things. There's just so many things. I have approximately 15 tenants. I have upholstery companies, I have a bakery, I have, you know, just, I see what the needs are in the neighborhood and I really want to try and pursue and bring them in. I've been working with SBI DC, Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Development. We're trying to create all the incentive packages and programs for all of these small businesses that are going to be coming into the neighborhood so that this way we can lay them out, we can give them discounts on their electric, on their gas, on all their utilities, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I mean, it, I'm really working so, you know, last week, we were at the Maker Space at the Army Terminal. I'm going over to the Greenpoint Manufacturing District. I just really, we're putting a package together that'll be successful and hopefully this will be the first project that'll be a sample and then I'm going to pursue doing two or three or more of these after we become successful.
Okay. I'd just like to add that boutique manufacturing is a new niche for manufacturing use that is basically all light manufacturing. There's a couple of others in the city and they bring specialty entrepreneurs to the Red Hook neighborhood. But all of them have basically light manufacturing, specialty uses, and cater to artisanal entrepreneurs, startups, and incubator businesses.
Thank you. And the last question, the application also states that distributor representative firms are a critical business use in the proposed development. Can you speak about that and how the representative team work, will work?
I'm sorry, can you?
So, I'm going to ask the question one more time and I'm going to give some context for it. So, the application also states that the distributor representative firms are a critical business use in the proposed development. Can you speak about that and how the representative team will work? And to give context, a critical business use group, office use as the proposed development will be what is known as a distributive representative firm. More and more producers are relying on industrial distributors to serve key markets. These firms will, these firms will represent local manufacturers and companies within and without the development site buildings. Industrial distributor reps take a lead role in the sale and distributions of the products of a particular manufacturer company or industry. These distributors are independent firms, usually consisting of one to four sales and support workers. There is a need for distributors for the following manufacturing uses: industrial, electrical, power transmission and bearing, HVAC, plumbing, industrial PFPV, building materials, and construction electronics. And you guys pretty much get that. An individual distributor representative or distributor representative firm may represent one manufacturer company or industrial, several manufacturers, companies, or industrial in the same field of a combination of different manufacturer companies or industries. So, I'm going to ask the question one more time because there was a lot of context that Councilmember Vilas gave. But the application also states that distributor representative firms are a critical business use in the proposed development. Can you speak about that and how the representative team will work?
Commissioner Riley, I'll try to provide some context. I don't, I think this is one of the many types of uses that was proposed. My wife, who's actually a manufacturer's representative and does this sort of distribution work for Amazon and similar online distributors, listen, the use, the uses that are allowed under M1-5 are like an M1-1. They're incredibly broad. Now, in terms of a distribution or logistics, you know, management practice, which could either, could be any of these types of industries that you discussed, actually would be, of course, welcomed in the building and work comprehensively with, with the actual standard manufacturing that is seen as the base of the building. Now, I think any type of use that is going to support a demand for jobs and a need for these types of services would be supported in the building and was contemplated in terms of these additional office uses. But I think regardless of what that mix occurs to be, the intent is to make a manufacturing hub, to incubate businesses and to grow them. And if there are supportive distribution businesses for any of the lines that you identified, you know, that that would be supported and encouraged in this building.
I personally, I thought about, like you just said, with the distributors and I have distributors coming to me every day because I, we're also city contractors and we do mechanical work and we have pump manufacturers that come and visit us and they have all these different lines and bearing manufacturers and all of the different components that you were saying. So, I, you know, we will reach out and we will see about, you know, whether or not there's a need depending on the tenants that we have for the different types of distributors that we need to bring in to represent them.
The building design itself is based on being as flexible as possible. So, any number of support facilities or types would be accommodated or can be accommodated within that building type. What we find in the other locations is that the, this gives us certain floor plate sizes that we're just not capable of getting with smaller building types, single-story building types. So, that's, any of those uses are intended as the use for the building.
Thank you. I have no more questions for you. I would just ask that if Councilmember Vilas is watching this, if she does reach out to you, be able to answer any further question that she has. There being no other questions, this applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 41 Richard Street?
No, Chair. No one online and no, no other person, no, no one else in person.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on pre-considered LU relating to the 41 Richard Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the fifth and last public hearing on pre-considered LU relating to the 80-01 Broadway Commercial Overlay Proposal in Councilmember Christian's district located in Elmhurst, Queens. This is a proposal to legalize existing commercial use along a section of Broadway that is a commercial corridor. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can do so by submitting it or emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Council, can we please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, the first panel consists of Alexia Landsman and, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I believe Richard Lobell should be online.
Oh, and we also, let me confirm that.
We're here on standby in case there's any technical difficulty.
And Kevin Williams.
Yeah, I was supposed to be online, but since I'm here.
Okay, so let me.
Are you able to hear me?
Oh, yes, so we, hello, Richard. Okay.
Hello, thank you.
So, who will be presenting?
I'll present.
Okay, so why don't we first have all three panelists raise their right hand and state their name for the record, please?
Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC.
Alexia Landsman from Sheldon Lobell, PC.
Kevin Williams from GZA.
Thank you. And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in response to Councilmember questions and in your statement?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Mr. Williams?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the view in public. If you need a sensible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now, the applicant team may begin. Panelists, before you begin, just please reinstate your name or organization for the record. You may begin.
Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC. Chair Riley, councilmembers, thank you for hearing us today on what is a very straightforward application, the 80-01 Broadway Commercial Overlay. Next slide. So, what this application seeks to do is merely to place a C2-4 commercial overlay, which would have the effect of legalizing existing longstanding commercial uses at the site. There are two lots which are primarily covered by this and one portion of another lot. And what this would do would be to allow, again, these non-conform commercial properties to come to conformance. Many of these commercial uses date back to the 1940s. So, we have uses here that have been commercial along this block since 1947 and this would allow them to come to conformance and would allow for the zoning map to reflect what's actually on the ground. Next slide. The next slide demonstrates the existing zoning along Broadway. As you can see, as Broadway bends down to the right, there is an R7A district, but there are a number of commercial overlay districts to the north, northwest, and southeast. This is undoubtedly a commercial overlay, a commercial area. However, a commercial overlay has not been placed on the site. The site has had residential zoning since 1961, despite that commercial uses at the site have thrived and we can talk a little bit about that in the coming slides. The next slide is a tax map, which demonstrates the sole purpose of the rezoning. Again, you can see the area of the C2-4 commercial overlay. The area highlighted in red, the development site, is the applicant's currently, current site, roughly 18,125 square feet with 17,000 square feet plus of commercial uses. The adjacent lot along Broadway would be included in this as well. The next slide is the area map and I think best demonstrates why a commercial overlay district here is most appropriate. Again, you can see the commercial overlay districts immediately to the east of the subject site as well as along Broadway as it goes to the south. In addition, commercial uses, regardless of the overlay, abound along this area of Broadway. In addition, Broadway itself, a commercial thoroughfare, sits here at a minimum of 80 feet wide, that is a wide street per zoning, well able to handle the additional, if any, cars and pedestrian traffic that would be, that would be caused by a commercial overlay here. And the site is on a corner on Baxter Avenue and Broadway. Baxter itself has a significant amount of traffic and so, there's excellent access to the site. There are a minimum of three subways which exist within 400 feet at the Elmhurst Avenue Station, roughly 400 feet to the southeast of the site. So, the site really is well, well-developed and well-fitted for commercial uses, as is evidenced by the long commercial history here. The next slide is the zoning change map, again, showing to the left the existing zoning district, an R7A, and to the right with a commercial overlay. We note importantly that the R7A district here still would govern the size of the buildings. This is not a rezoning about bulk. The R7A here would permit six to eight, eight-story buildings as already exist around this area on Broadway to the south and to the north. And this merely would be to allow for these grandfathered uses to remain as commercial conforming uses and in addition would allow commercial uses here to come back to the extent any of these businesses close. So, right now, if anyone wishes to make any changes to stores or layouts or as, as well as to uses at the site, they would need to go through an arduous process at DOB, whereas once the commercial overlay is placed here, these would be as-of-right applications and they would no longer worry about established commercial use. The next several slides show pictures of the site as well as the surrounding area. I would note that the commercial uses abound here on the ground floor. There is a community facility use on the second floor. This is a roughly 4,000 square foot childhood care center. This was established by the applicant himself, dating back to the early 2000s. So, the applicant here has really done well in terms of allowing for businesses to thrive here that service the local community. There's a surgical supply store, there are restaurants, childcare. Importantly, there's a 2,900 square foot post office, which is heavily utilized by the surrounding area. This would not be conforming within the existing R7A district, but with the new district, the C2-4 overlay district, the post office would be able to come back in should anything happen to the existing building. So, again, we are merely servicing the surrounding area. C2 districts themselves service local residential areas as is established by zoning. And the last thing I would note is to the west of the site sits Elmhurst Hospital at 11 stories, dominates most of the block and this, the commercial uses here are heavily utilized by doctors, nurses, and staff at the hospital. So, it really would be a shame if anything were to happen to these existing commercial uses. If you want to page through the remaining photos, then you are merely presented with a copy of the existing cellar, first and second floor plans, again, merely demonstrating the existing cellar floor primarily for storage. The first floor, the next slide, showing the range of commercial uses, including grocery, delis, subway store, and a post office and other commercial uses. And the second story and the next slide, which demonstrates the existing childhood care center. And with that, the applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Just two questions. How long have the businesses been operating on the applicant's property? And can you clarify why you have not sought to legalize your businesses until now?
Sure, thank you, Chair. So, commercial uses have been at the property since 1947. It dates back to an early bowling alley which existed on the site as well as other commercial uses between 1947 and 1961 when they became grandfathered uses. So, the existing buildings at the site, roughly 17,500 square feet of commercial uses, have all existed since 1961. The applicant is looking, you know, looks forward in terms of what happens to these properties in the next several years. So, the leases on the properties in terms of the commercial leases, they last right now through 2029. But beyond that, allowing for commercial overlay here would allow these businesses to remain despite any redevelopment that would happen at the site. So, in essence, there was really unnecessary to come in prior to this time, but as the applicant gets older and looks forward to what might happen to the property in the future, he'd like to ensure these businesses can remain, particularly the post office, which has been here since, at a minimum, 1981, so for 40-plus years, and would not be allowed to relocate here if a commercial overlay was not on the site and the applicant did redevelop the property. So, really, all we're seeking to do is to allow these local businesses to remain in perpetuity.
Thank you so much. There being no questions for this applicant panel. This panel is now excused. I see we have one member of the public who wants to testify on this panel. May I call, you guys are excused, thank you so much. May I call Elektra Holmes?
First of all, my name is pronounced E. Elektra, like the tragedy, the Greek tragedy. Based on my experience here, my initial experience being here, because I've never been here before, as it pertains to these new rezoning provisions and regulations that you guys are putting in place and the allowances that you are having, I just would like for the outcome to work towards a better New York City. So, overall, whatever decision, decision that you do make, I would like for it to work in the best interest of New York City, considering the mess that it did make earlier when these, this was put together in sectioning and changing voting areas and just creating a whole mess of the city. An early voting is today for those that don't know. The lack of consideration for communities and those who dwell within them and the elimination of the culture that was already established within them being spread out in different areas. So, I would only hope for the best interest of these communities to be positive, a positive progression and while continuing, and while continuing to be afforded the space for continuing to nurture and cultivate and to bring forth a better New York City again. And just make sure that everything is in its place and not so economically friendly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elektra. E. Elektra, E. Elektra. Just want to confirm, not done yet, just want to confirm, are you testifying on behalf of this project or are you just giving a general testimony?
I'm just giving a general testimony based on my experience being here today. I am a public administrations major from Mega Evans College and this is my first time here in this building and given the opportunity to speak, this is what I want to share with council.
Thank you so much for sharing. You're always welcome to come back.
Thank you for having me.
There being no other members of the public who wish to testify regarding 80-01 Broadway Commercial Overlay Proposal remotely, oh, sorry. Excuse me.
That's correct, Chair, but there is no one remotely willing, wanting to testify.
There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on pre-considered LU to relate into 80-01 Broadway Commercial Overlay Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. That concludes today. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and council staff, and the sergeant-at-arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.